Not watch off.
Okay, I got it.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Just for the recording, this meeting is April 21st at 7:00 PM and we already did the pledge of allegiance and Jackie is going to take roll call.
Counselor Coker.
Here.
Counselor Bjornson.
Here.
Counselor Whitney.
Here.
Counselor Hooker.
Here.
Mayor Hollitt.
Here.
Counselor Kenyon. Counselor Spleedoff.
I'm here. I hope I can stick through the whole meeting.
There's Dawn. I see Dawn. She's in now. Okay, so everyone's here.
Thank you.
All right. Any additions, corrections, or adjustments to the agenda? The only adjustment that I have is 10.1. Kevin, did you have anything on that or was that just from me?
That was a placeholder for you, Mayor, to provide an update and if you had some numbers to provide for the meeting that we'd have the ability to have an action item.
Okay, perfect. So that 10.1, I'll keep it there as a placeholder for discussion, but there probably won't be an action. Is there any other additions, corrections, or adjustments from anyone else? Okay, moving on to public comment. I'm going to look through the people that we have on Zoom and if you have a public comment and you know how to raise your hand, please do so. And if you don't know how to raise your hand, just go ahead and start slowly talking. And let us know your name. Okay, hearing no one, no public comment. All right, on to mayor comments, announcements, and proclamations. I do not have any announcements for this meeting. Council comments or announcements? Any counselors have any comments? Okay, that was fast. On to agenda number 8.1 in the consent agenda. Do I have a motion? Do I have a motion for the consent agenda?
Yes, to make an admission that we approve the consent agenda.
Thank you, Counselor Whitney. Do I have a second?
Well, second.
Thank you, Counselor Spleedoff. A motion from Counselor Whitney and seconded by Counselor Spleedoff. Jackie, will you call for the vote?
Counselor Bjornson.
Hi.
Mayor Hollitt.
Hi.
Counselor Whitney.
Hi.
Counselor Kenyon. Counselor Coker.
Hi.
Counselor Hooker.
Hi.
Counselor Spleedoff.
Hi.
So is Dawn here? Because I let her in, but.
Yeah.
Come on, are you having trouble unmuting herself? I know she had a problem with that a couple. Oh, she just messaged me and she said that her speakers have crashed and she's working on it. Okay, so we will move on until she gets that fixed. Kevin, we don't have any appointments today, correct? Oh, there's Dawn. Kevin, there are no appointments today, correct? Okay, great. You're muted.
Sorry about that. I was shaking my head.
All right, so business. Go ahead, Jackie. Did you have something?
I was gonna get Dawn's vote.
Oh, okay.
Um, Counselor Kenyon for the consent agenda? Okay, I'll skip it.
We'll come back to her. Thank you, Jackie. So business from city council 10.1. I'll just give you kind of guys an update and then you guys can decide where you want to go from here. We have been, our little subcommittee met in the council chambers. We talked about kind of giving the new council chambers a fresh coat of paint and just a little bit of updates, moving some furniture around so that we can accommodate people better for it being a council chamber again. Last week, myself and Kevin Cronin and our IT guy Elver went and visited the Cottage Grove Council Chambers. They have a really pretty snazzy room. It just looks really good the way they have it set up. I think want to say he spent, he said he spent under 15,000 to get it set up. He has it so that all counselors have an iPad. That way their agenda and everything can be accessed right there from the DS. They're not super fancy. They're just have the basic stuff. They have a camera set up in the back of the room, the entrance door, and that's kind of a bigger camera. And that camera can capture basically the front two rows, I would say, and then the full DS with all the counselors up there. Now their room is substantially larger than ours. And then they have another camera. It's a smaller one that's placed behind the counselors that is able to capture most of the audience sitting there. They have very, very large TV screens in the council chambers. I want to say Kevin might remember, but I think they're like 84-inch TVs and.
They are the most enormous screens I have ever seen outside of a sports car.
Yeah, so that would look a little silly for us to have TVs that large. So we were kind of hoping possibly to get something a little bit smaller than that, but still have TVs in there. The hopes are to have one TV that would be accessible to staff to throw up their presentations. Any type of, you know, presentation that they want to put up there so that everybody can see it and we don't have to pass out a ton of paper. And that it's also viewable by the public. That could also be used if a presenter from, let's say, El Rappa, for instance, was zooming in and needed to throw up a PowerPoint slideshow. That could be on that TV in the room for everyone to see something we didn't have in the past. And then the other TV would be for counselors or anyone else that is zooming in so that the audience can see their face and that Zoom. There was a lot of audio equipment in their council chambers. I don't think that we need the depth of audio that they have because their room is so much larger than ours. So yeah, I took pictures of that. I took a couple of short videos. And then after that, myself, Colleen, Kevin, and the IT guy Elver came back and we met just a couple of days ago in our council chamber and tried to kind of put it together on how it would look in our room. And Elver is working on a bid to talk about, there's two options we have for where we would place the TVs. We do have a couple hurdles, one being that there are only so many outlets in that room. And if we need to add outlets, you know, that's going to drive the cost of that project up quite a bit. So we are really trying to avoid that. So we might be a little, we might be putting the TVs in a temporary spot until we can figure that out because we have to run conduit for the HDMI and the computer, I believe. So Elver's working on that. Kevin got a gee, is it Bear Mountain Electric? I think Kevin got Bear Mountain Electric yet to come in and they're going to do a bid. That's not until May 5th, though. So I'm kind of thinking that we might put the TVs in a temporary spot until we get that bid back from Bear Mountain because I really don't want to wait that long. So I'm open to questions. Something I would like to do in the meantime is go ahead and grant permission to Kevin or Elver to purchase the cameras that we need. Because I think no matter how we set it up, we're going to need those two cameras, one in the back, one at the entrance. So also by getting those cameras, it's kind of dependent on how much conduit or cables that those cameras have. They might be only five feet long. They might be 10 feet long. So Elver stated that that's going to be part of his bid is if it's a short piece, it's going to make a lot more work for him. So I think if we could allow him to order those cameras first, then he's going to get better, give a better estimate for us on the rest of the work we need. And then also probably some TVs, but some smaller sized TVs, probably in the 50 to 60 inch size range, just we need them large enough so that everyone in the back of the room can see the TV, but it doesn't need to be a sports bar like Kevin mentioned. So any questions?
Mayor, just one quick update to your report. I did get a link from Elver, I think yesterday regarding the vendor and the model of the video you're just describing. So as soon as council's ready, we can hit go and get that thing ordered.
What was the price tag on that?
Honestly, and you're going to ask for that, but I didn't actually open the link. However, he described it has, it's a lot cheaper than it would be if I ordered it from home or as a personal citizen. So he's got a, he can get a better deal on it than you and I could as a private citizen.
Okay. Yeah, we discussed that a little bit yesterday. So I personally would like to get us back meeting in person as quickly as possible and we do have to follow the rules now to be able to have hybrid meetings. So having the cameras up front is really what's holding us up. So we really need to get those purchased. Discussion? Go ahead, Counselor Kenyon.
Um, I'd like to go ahead and move forward as long as we're still under that benchmark that we set. And I did want to confirm that we, to my knowledge, already approved for the 20,000 to come out of this year's budget. We don't have to wait until next year's budget. So I think we should move forward with it now.
Okay, that is correct. We did approve for 20,000 out of this year's budget and I feel really confident that we are going to stay way under that 20,000. Go ahead, Counselor Whitney.
Yeah, so with purchase to be a permit, are we, I feel like that would be a good idea to make sure we purchase extra warranties to go with.
You're cutting out a little bit. Did you say that you want to make sure we purchase a warranty with the equipment that we purchase?
Yes.
Okay, um, I have a pretty good feeling that a warranty will come from that because we're going through a special vendor, but I think that we can easily make sure that a warranty is coming with that. Did you have anything else, Counselor Whitney?
No.
So warranty on camera equipment? Okay, I got that written down. Go ahead, Counselor Spleedoff.
I'd like to make a motion if it's time to now.
I'm sure.
Go ahead and authorize. What was the name of that guy? This.
Elver. Well, I don't, it doesn't really have to have a name in there. It would just be the purchase of the equipment that we need.
Purchase the equipment that we need for the council chambers to do it as soon as possible.
I'll second that.
Okay, motion made by Counselor Spleedoff to purchase the equipment that we need for the council chambers to get set up for hybrid. Seconded by Counselor Hooker. Is there any more questions or discussion? Okay, we'll have some more information soon about the, oh, go ahead, Counselor Kenyon.
I just wanted to see if we are going to be able to, if you think there's quite a bit of room left in that budget, will we be able to organize getting it painted? And I understand it doesn't have to be before we open up for hybrid, but I don't think we've talked about it yet.
So our committee has already talked about painting in there. We are definitely moving forward with painting in that room and getting it just finished and clean and stuff like that. We have some other projects in there, like the staff desk. We want to make a nice desk for the staff and have it just a little bit, a better looking council room. So there are a little bit more plans and works on that. Okay. Counselor Whitney?
Yes, so I think it's important to remember we approved up to 20,000, but if there's a way to not spend that much, then I think that's great because we can take that money, that COVID funding money and move it to another project to use it that has to do with that, for the ARPA funds. Just because we have $20,000 that we agree to this, we have to spend it all.
Yeah, I don't think we'll spend $20,000 on it. Any other comments? All right, Jackie, can you call for the vote?
Counselor Hooker.
Hi.
Counselor Bjornson.
Hi.
Counselor Whitney.
Hi.
Counselor Kenyon.
Hi.
Counselor Coker.
Hi.
Counselor Spleedoff.
Hi.
Mayor Hollitt.
Hi. Thank you all. It'll be good to keep moving forward on that project. Our next order of business is 11.1. Renovation costs for the WAC. Go ahead, Kevin.
So there is a CAF Council Action Form in your packet to review and consider a scope of work from the senior engineer to do the cost estimate per council direction. We are going to take that 2000 site. We're going to update, scrub through it and then provide you some updated numbers. There's a slight nuance from the last time we met and that is an additional additional money for a structural analysis. So you can amend the motion if you don't want to add that part to it or if you do want to add that part to it. But I think it's, I personally think it is worth spending the extra 1,500. The money for this would come out of next year's budget. It would not hit this year's budget. So when we meet as a budget committee on Monday, you'll see that in the WAC budget fund. Besides that, the only program note is that pallets have been removed from the WAC property. But everything else in the memo stands. I'm happy to take any questions from the council.
Go ahead, Counselor Spleedoff.
Yes, I hear that the food program is moving out of the WAC and has found a place over in the West Ridge, Judy High over there. Is that true?
Is that your question?
Is that true?
Yeah.
That is the word on the street, but I don't have any confirmation that counselor.
Okay, because isn't that about our only holdup on that building?
There are multiple tenants that have been notified to vacate the building. And as far as I know, I've not had any texts or emails or other notifications that they're not able to do that. So no news is good news from my perspective, but certainly with the deadline approaching next week, we're going to make sure that all folks are out.
Okay, because that's going to make a difference. Now then, the updated the, you plan to what it costs to bring it up to the mobility standards. Because we don't want to throw good money after bad. You know, it's, we've got the money, part of the money redo it. You know, I want to be careful because there's no sense throwing a lot of money in there and us having to put a lot more money in. Burn good after bad.
Okay.
Hook in a mud puddle, you're not going to catch any fish.
All right, thank you, Counselor Spleedoff. Go ahead, Counselor Kenyon.
Um, my only question about the assessments being done is I, I don't have the my computer wasn't working to let me in to this meeting, so I can't look at the packet right now, but I believe it said 10 weeks before this could get done. And I was wondering if that has to do with waiting for next year's budget or another reason, because I did review our budget for the WAC and what we've spent so far and the expenses that we have left for the remainder of the year. And it seems like we might be able to fit this cost in this year's budget or at least a large part of it. So if it would move any faster to, you know, to do it now, is that an option?
I can answer that. I think that the time it's going to take is the time it's going to take. I think the timing works in our favor is that we really don't want to be spending any more money as we make it to the finish line on June 30th and that the timing works in our favor to be able to spend it in next year's budget. So I can ask our senior engineer what it would take to speed the timeline up, but I won't be able to report back to you until your first meeting on that one, probably.
All right. My question is if we, if we do this estimate from the engineer and we decide to keep the building, can we use that? Can we take this money out of that $1.5 million grant?
I think that is an excellent question and I wish I had some more direction from the state, either through Senator Pizanski's office or Department of Administrative Services or just some city agency that can give us guidance. I don't have an update, unfortunately, nothing in my inbox to shed light on that. But certainly we need to start sort of shaking the tree a little bit to try to get some guidance on that.
Okay, it seems to me that that would be something that could come out of that, but I hate to assume. Okay, does anyone else have any more questions or go ahead, Counselor Whitney?
Yeah, so I think it's important to definitely move forward with this tonight to really get, to get that go ahead. Because I know there are groups that are working on looking for additional funding to help redo the WAC and get that done. And so I think, I believe having this piece done as well will really help with any grant writing or any of those processes that other people are participating in. It really helps us to move forward.
I agree. I think no matter which directions we take, we need to make sure we do our due diligence and really understand the status of the building.
Definitely.
Do I have a motion from anyone?
I would make the recommended motion. It's just that I can't see it to read it.
Okay, recommended motion. I can read it is I moved to approve the scope of work and budget and authorize the city administrator pro temp to execute the contract.
Actually, I'd like to make that motion with a little amendment that would state that I would like to request that any change orders be authorized by council.
Okay, do I have a second?
Oh.
Motion made by Counselor Kenyon with the recommended motion with adding any change orders be approved by the city council and seconded by Counselor Hooker. Any more discussion?
I believe, I believe it was seconded, Mayor, by Counselor Coker.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It was me, Kristi.
I'm sorry. Thank you, Counselor Coker. Jackie, can you call for the vote?
Mayor Hollitt.
Hi.
Counselor Whitney. Counselor Hooker.
Hi.
Counselor Kenyon.
Hi.
Counselor Spleedoff. Counselor Spleedoff, okay. Counselor Bjornson.
Hi.
Counselor Coker.
Hi.
Motion carried. Thank you. All right, on to 11.2 excavator bids. You got the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. There is a council action forum in your packet for a new excavator that is in this current year's budget. It was for 200,000. The bids came back at 208. There were a few questions from council members directed to me and I have four of those on to Robert, who has joined us tonight. So I'm going to turn this over to Robert so he can address some of those questions. As I know, if you ask a paper pusher like me questions on an excavator, I'm going to just fumble it. So I'm going to turn things over to Robert.
Good evening, Councilman Mayor.
Good evening. Good evening, Robert.
Do you want me to read the questions asked or do you just want to?
Yeah, so the first question was from Counsel Hooker regarding to just the man hours you're estimating. Do you have a ballpark you can share with council?
Well, I can give you a rough ballpark, but that varies year to year depending on jobs that come up or emergencies that may happen, so on and so forth. But anywhere from 200 to 500 hours a year roughly. There have been some years that, that we didn't operate it maybe 100 hours, but then there's been years we would run it such as Teller Road or the Garden Road where we would run, you know, 500 plus. So it just depends on what's going on at the time.
Okay, and immediately kind of out of the gate, we've got the Kokonye project queued up.
That's true. The Kokonye job, which was put on our plate to save the city money by having us do it in-house. You know, saving upwards of 200 plus thousand nowadays with the way prices are, it'd be upwards of 400, 500,000. So that said, the old excavator we have has got over 8,000 hours. It's over 20 years old and is in, you know, constant repair. It still runs, but we never know if it's going to run a full shift.
Okay.
And one more, one more thing, the question, an excavator and a track hoe are both the same thing. And I apologize for putting it in as an excavator on this council packet instead of what it was labeled as in the budget.
I will take the blame for that because I don't know the difference either. So the other question that we got was the, and then we discussed this earlier, Robert, I think last week about the shipping as well as the warranties. I think those were some of the questions from Counselor Dawn.
Yeah, the shipping, so the other two excavators, one from Papay Machinery and the other one Peterson Cat. They had one-year warranties on them. The Case Machine has a three-year warranty, which is, you know, quite a bit longer. The, the current machine we have is a case. It's a solid machine. You know, hands down, they'll do just as good as the Cat. However, the Cat or the John Deere will have a better resale value just because of the name.
In regard to the shipping costs, the Case one does not include additional shipping costs. The price is included.
Yes, that is. The, the shipping cost is included in the price 208,299. So the other ones, you're looking at upwards of $2,000 or $3,000 just for shipping. So you know, the fact that it came in at that with basically free shipping. So, you know, the fact that it came in at that with basically free shipping.
Mayor, I'll turn it back to you to try to make sure we've addressed all of council's questions.
Thank you. Go ahead, Robert.
Make sure I got all of these. The other question was other items budgeted or been ordered and not yet received. See, we've ordered, we just actually received those the day before yesterday, our first round of UV fixtures. Those are, we're doing about $60,000 a year to replace 24 fixtures. So that's been done. The Influent pump was another item that was roughly $17,000 as far as a capital prop or capital item. That's in route for delivery. Some of the other items like the, the dump truck, five-yard dump truck, that was basically, I can't even get a service truck for $50,000. So that was one that was kind of tabled to see if we can save more to, to get a truck that is gonna last instead of buying something used that's gonna be doing the same thing as the equipment we have now. So there are plenty of items that have been ordered, or not plenty. There are other items, capital items that have been ordered and picked up and paid for already. So the, the parts of that question.
What would be the status of the backhoe?
The backhoe, I was given, or the Public Works was given $20,000 for a backhoe. You can't get a backhoe for less than 60,000. I didn't push the issue on a backhoe at this time because the one we have, it is actually our newest piece of equipment we have, and it's a 2006 model. It's only got 4,000 hours, which is still well beyond its life expectancy. The, the fact that $20,000 is gonna buy you a set of wheels and tires and a bucket for that backhoe. So again, not enough money to, to get a new item this year. However, if we keep saving, you know, in a year or two more, we could probably pull that one off. Same thing with five-yard dump truck.
Roll it over. Okay, that actually helps me to understand or, or, you know, to be okay with spending a little extra on this piece of equipment. Just knowing that it's not gonna put us over on our budget. So thank you for that update. I did want to find out though, and I forgot to ask in the email, what about trade-in? What are you gonna do with our current excavator?
Well, the, the hope would be to either sell it and put it in, I don't know, the surplus, or utilize that as a training for up-and-comers in Public Works that have little experience in an excavator. I could use it as, as training for them. Is, face it, we're all getting older and I don't like getting out of machines as much as I used to. And I got some younger guys that are, you know, talking at the bit and wanting to learn. So I was hoping to possibly keep it as a training device to better equip the city with good quality operators.
And you have plenty of room to store both then?
Yes, ma'am.
All right.
Yeah, it seems to me that might be money better spent just to hold on to it and use it as a training aid. Because what, I mean, you're probably not gonna get a ton of money out of it if we sell it, right?
No, you, you wouldn't get next to nothing out of that machine. Like I said, it's got over 8,000 hours on it.
Yeah.
It's over 20 years old.
Yeah, versus the cost of having to send people somewhere to take a training. Seems like a good idea to me. I have a couple of questions. One question was, did you guys think about leasing? And if so, what would be the pros and cons?
I did not look at leasing. I have looked at cost of rentals. Rentals, you're looking at, say, on a monthly basis, a little over 3,000 a month. That's not including delivery. And, you know, for the most part, the excavator we're buying, we can haul with our own truck and trailer that we have. So that wouldn't really be an issue unless we had to get a machine that was larger than a 160, then we would have to have delivery. The only problem with that is Public Works can't sit and do a job 40 hours a week, 10 weeks out of the month. We also have meters that need to be red, delinquents that need to be dealt with, sewers that need to be cleaned. You know, the list goes on as far as other tasks Public Works does. So with that being said, rental and leasing, in my opinion, are a pain in the, the patunia trying to plan and schedule. Now, if we own the machine, I can say, okay, we've got our doings done this week. We're gonna go spend three days working this job. The other nice thing about this Kokoni job is that I was not given a deadline on. So I'm, I'm pushing to get started and get it done. However, there's no deadline to make it happen. Say if we had a contractor, we would give them a deadline.
Gotcha. My other question is, excuse me, would this piece of equipment have the attachment, like a brush hog on it, so that we can take care of ditches and things like that?
It has the ability for attachments of that nature, such as brush hogs, thrashers, grapples, just about any kind of attachment you can think of. I've been looking at some videos lately just because I like excavators. You know, they even make brooms for them. So yes, we can make just about any attachment or get just about any attachment for this machine.
Awesome. I called the Cottage Grove mayor and spoke to them, and they said that their excavator, they went ahead and got those add-ons for theirs so that they could take care of that type of work. And it sounds like it actually kind of saved them money having the ability to do that in-house as well.
Yeah, anytime you have to pay an outsider to come in and do something with machines like that, especially municipalities, they, they like to gouge, even though they say they're not. I've been in the business long enough to know they're gonna charge you until you blink. That said, it is much cheaper doing it in-house if we own the equipment. Now, this first go of this machine, if approved, it's just gonna come with three buckets and a thumb. The other items would have to be purchased at a later date, obviously. And that would be something that I would definitely like to see happen. That machine has been used several emergencies, the most recent being the fire out at the treatment plant. Had we not had that and onsite within an hour of that fire starting, that fire could have very easily taken over the whole hillside, and I'd be looking at black instead of green. So that also worked well for when the levee broke after the soapocalypse. I was able to rebuild the levee with it. You know, emergency situations like that, we used it during the soapocalypse, getting us out to the sewer treatment facility before we had overflows into the river. Also leased it to ODOT to help clear the highway. You know, the list goes on as far as emergencies that it could help out with as well.
Thank you. Go ahead, Counselor Whitney.
Yeah, mine isn't a question as much of a statement. I feel like a lot of our direction is going towards trying to do as much work as we can ourselves. And so I definitely see this equipment really helping with that. And I really support purchasing what we need to help ourselves.
Agreed. Go ahead, Counselor.
I have a crew that loves to do the work.
Go ahead, Counselor Spleedoff.
Yes, I'd like to know, do we have any extra equipment that will fit off our other trackhoe onto this one?
I have not asked if, if our current buckets that we have will fit on the new machine. I could ask that and find out. I will note to you that the two-foot bucket we have is missing two teeth and shanks. So it would need to be a mass rebuilt. And the three-foot bucket on it, all the shanks need to be replaced because they're so wore out. They won't even hold a tooth. And there's a large hole in the bottom of it. The only bucket on that machine that still has any structural integrity is the muck bucket. So that's the smooth blade bucket. So there is that possibility. But as far as other equipment, such as mowers or things like that, no, I do not have any of those items for the old excavator.
So the brush, we don't have a brush hog?
Nope. This old machine we have would not accommodate it. It did not have the hydraulics for it.
Okay.
I mean, we could, we could have added it, but it, it's like putting a, a Band-Aid on a heart surgery. Not gonna work.
Thank you, Robert.
You bet.
Go ahead, Counselor Hooker.
Yeah, Robert, I just want to make sure the quote has already expired. It says 4:15. I just want to make sure that this is the actual cost you're gonna get it at.
Yes, ma'am. I just spoke to him because that was a question that I knew was gonna come up. And he told me as long as I gave him an answer by tomorrow morning that he would warrant that quote.
Okay, thank you.
You bet.
All right, that's a lot of discussion. Do we have a motion on the table? Thank you for all the good information, Robert.
You bet.
I'd like to make a motion.
Go ahead, Counselor Coker.
I move to approve the purchase and authorize the city administrator pro tem to execute a contract.
Well, second that. Um, I just have one question. Our contracts are signed by mayor with council correct, with council consent, correct, Kevin?
Yes.
That is a good question. I don't know the answer to that. I'm gonna defer to your knowledge on that one, Mayor.
Well, I just wanted to make sure that you were aware of it. It's kind of the way that it's worded. Could be vague, so I just wanted to make sure you knew about that in the council. Okay, so a motion on the table from Counselor Coker and seconded by, who was that?
Bjarnson.
Counselor Bjarnson. Perfect. Thank you.
Did, is there going to be a friendly amendment to this?
If you have one, go ahead, Audi.
That, that the mayor signed the approval to get this on the record? Now, we can, you said that you have to sign it.
And does Counselor Bjarnson and Counselor Coker both accept that friendly amendment?
Yes, I do.
Okay, so then now it should say, I move to approve the purchase and authorize the city administrator pro tem to execute the contract with approval from council and signature by mayor to follow our charter. You want to call for the vote, Jackie?
Yep. Counselor Bjarnson?
Aye.
Counselor Spleedoff?
Aye.
Counselor Coker?
Aye.
Counselor Hooker?
Aye.
Counselor Kenyon?
Aye.
Counselor Whitney?
Aye.
Mayor Hullett?
Aye. Motion passed. Thank you. I appreciate all the good information, Robert. Uh, what's next? Do we have any staff reports today?
So I believe Chief Martin is zoomed in tonight to follow up on a question that was raised your last meeting regarding the El Rapa code enforcement. So I think we should start with Chief and then if Colleen or Robert has anything else to add from their departments, that would be great too.
All right, Mayor, Council, I'll give you the, the March update first real fast. We had 411 calls that equalled 41 case reports, major case reports. We had some training on the, it's a new legislative action from the state. It's called airway training, and that's different kinds of people in distress that officers might come to deal with. A lot of it is we call, I have extra ambulance come help us. And then going into the El Rapa report, I have a lot of information here. I'll try to synopsize some of it, and then people can ask specific questions if they have questions. Because I wasn't really given complete thought on what to do. I have a lot of information, so ask questions if answers, you don't get your answer that you're looking for. So one of the stats we started keeping in October of '21, so October of '21 till last month, so March of '22, we averaged 229 hours per month of what we call a wrap-up patrol. And what that is, is that's when certified officers are working during daylight hours because the smoke school for chimneys stuff is only applicable during daylight hours for the training. So you can only write a ticket for smoke during the daylight hours. And then, so all three of our patrol officers are currently trained. We keep them trained during the smoke season because it's really expensive to, I think it's up to like 250 bucks a person now every six months. So there's not many other training we have that makes sure we do it every six months. That's an EPA thing. So we keep three people, we keep patrol trained up for that during the, during the smoke season and then try to just do one or no one during the non-smoke season. So going back to 2020 stats for that, Officer Miller has kind of spearheaded that. She's done a lot of education. She did fireplace and wood stove inspections along with the previous city administrator and previous community service director. They all worked on that project where Officer Miller was going around and inspecting wood stoves for people on the exemption lists. And that was kind of a two-year thing. We were kind of coming out of that unless we have new people that enter the exemption list. As far as citations, Officer Miller wrote three citations this year so far, two, one citation in 2021. All those citations have to do with outdoor burning. So those were the, the outdoor wood smoke part of that program. I talked to El Rapa and they have, they don't call them citations. They call them cases. They've had two cases up here during the same timeframe back to 2020. And one of their cases was actually an asbestos case. It wasn't a smoke related case. And then with that, I can take some questions. I might not be able to answer them all, but I can get that information from Officer Miller as well. So if there was any specific questions about the program.
Go ahead, Counselor Spleedoff.
Yes, I'd like to find out. I thought that Officer Val was part of her shift was hired on as the code enforcement. And then she was paid, the other part of her shift was to the PD. And now it's changed?
No, the, the funds were spread over all of patrol since the program started. She was just the primary person that did it.
Okay, because I misunderstood. I thought that when she was hired on, she was hired on as half code enforcement and half PD.
She was hired on as community service officer with that of her primary goal, but the actual funds have been spread across all the patrol officers.
So that was, that was your primary then, or is that decided at your level?
That was above my pay grade at the prior administration, but it was a collaborative effort because of, with El Rapa and the good company. And I'm not gonna miss some of the partners, but DEQ. It's, my mind's going to blank, and then the federal EPA.
Okay, because a lot of people, me included, and I guess all the other counselors, were under the understanding that she was hired. were under the understanding that, uh, she was heard half her salaries to go toward the Arapa. And the other half was, uh, O P D.
Well, the, the, I don't remember all those specifics, but the, the wage was actually just a certain set amount as a grant and it was spread across all the officers. And she, she does do that work, but her primary duty is a police officer because the emergency services part have to come first and then all the code enforcement and the rapid stuff is secondary.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor, I have a question.
Go ahead, Counselor Kenyon.
Um, Chief Martin, would you say then, cause I don't know how many hours there are in a year, would you say that we are, or that your department is, um, spending about a halftime positions worth of time on code enforcement?
Well, code enforcement, again, this is, Arapa and code enforcement are, are different. So I guess the, the question I would have there is code enforcement, all, we all do code enforcement. So that I'd have to get back to that. Every officer takes code cases, it's, but so it's hard to, it's hard to explain that because we all take code cases. Valerie's just had the training and done some of the Arapa stuff. And everybody takes code cases.
Okay, I guess what I meant then, um, how to word that would be do you think that we're utilizing about a halftime positions worth of whatever we're supposed to be doing under the La Rappa grant?
Well, the, the Arapa grant's not code. It's, it's smoke stuff.
Oh, smoke, okay.
The way we've done the Arapa again is the average from October, when we started keeping that specific data, October of two thousand twenty-one to March of twen- two thousand twenty-two, we've averaged two hundred and twenty-nine hours per month of smoke control.
Okay, and is that about a halftime position?
I'd say it's a little bit more than that, but I think the, the funding's a little bit more than halftime.
Oh, okay.
I've never really been, I've never been part of the funding part of it really besides conversations at meetings. I've just been directed to do the mission. So the mission we get done and so far, uh, Arapa and good company with people that have been on the admin side of it have been happy with our results.
Excellent. That's what I wanted to know.
I could hire probably three code enforcement officers full-time to work for a couple of years to handle all the codes if we
To catch up.
Treat it more proactively and, and less reactive.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Counselor Whitney.
Sorry, it took me a moment to tell you. Um, yeah, so basically it would be like twenty hours of weeks of code enforcement to meet the criteria for the rapa, which sounds like you guys are reading that. But I just, I just wanted to comment that I think it was a great idea to, to spread that out to other officers because if it's just assigned to one officer, it makes sense to me that, uh, you know, it's only happening when the officer's on duty and they're able to spread it out and they're able to catch those violations more timely and more often and really help enforce it more efficiently. So kudos to you guys making that change.
I heard part of that, the radio going in the background, but I thought part of that was a thanks, so.
Did you want me to say it again?
I, that'd be up to the mayor's post. But I'll, I'll pass it on. I did hear, uh, a thanks to the way we spread it out, so.
Did you have anything else, Counselor Whitney? Are there any other questions for Chief Martin? All right, thank you, Chief.
I was gonna have Valerie peek in and, and give a little part, but she's been back and forth on calls to my, so. And if there's no other questions, everybody have a good night. I'll still be here, but.
Thank, thank you, Chief.
Thank you, Chief.
Kevin, did you have another, uh, staff report?
Uh, I do not want to have one. I'm gonna defer to either Robert or Colleen to add any last-minute, uh, items from their departments.
I do have a report for council for month of March. Um, we produced fourteen point eight million gallons of water. Uh, we treated twenty point seven million gallons. We had twenty-six service orders and eighteen locates. We had two sewer issue, issues during that month. One was, uh, uh, city hall. We had some backup in, uh, one of the toilets. Uh, we got that taken care of rather quickly because Chief was ready to blow up, so to speak. Um, and then the rest area, there was a small power outage that happened and, uh, it affected the sewer lift station uh, at, uh, the rest area. And when that lift station loses power, it, uh, will no longer pumps. Anyway, uh, caretaker, kudos to April. She caught it, uh, minutes after it had started backing up into the rest area. It was less than a hundred gallons. Um, uh, Shane was, uh, Johnny on the spot getting there to help eliminate that during the weekend. Um, so again, that is also one of the locations. We've got the FEMA grant for a generator, uh, as well as fire department. That is still going on. Uh, update on those two generators for the fire department and that, uh, we're, we're looking at, uh, January before they're delivered and we ordered them over six months ago, so waiting on those. Uh, we had one water leak. It was a service gasket. Uh, it was a gasket on our side, so it did not cost the resident any money. We got that taken care of. We also did, uh, building maintenance at the O I P office, uh, city hall, WAC and our wellhouses. Did street maintenance to include, uh, sweeping, pail repairs and some sign, sign standard replacements. Uh, sign standards are basically just the pole to hold the signs up. Park maintenance and mowing, and you'll see that the guys are out there doing that regularly now with the way grass is growing. Uh, finished up on most of the hydrant maintenance, got, uh, all of our hydrants, uh, safety chained back into, uh, operating the way they should. So uh, you won't get any, uh, issues if you accidentally pull a cap off and the, the, uh, hydrant being pressurized already. So safety chains are very important for fire department people. Um, see valve exercising and mapping, uh, twenty twenty-four, the new lead copper rule is coming out, which means, um, there's a whole bunch of regulations and we have to have each and every pipe that we have in the ground inventoried, uh, meaning we need to know what size of pipe it is and what kind of pipe it is. If we do not know the size and type, then we will be nailed as, uh, being, uh, lead and copper connections, which will then cost city a lot of money to get those, uh, proven otherwise. So we're working diligently on getting everything mapped and, uh, inventoried. Uh, got the, uh, meters red and, uh, cleaned the routine problematic sewers. Uh, do those every three months, problematic sewers. Um, did, uh, two mailbox cutouts for, uh, people that have chosen to quit using the, post office and have their mail delivered at their house. It's a service that the city's done. We basically cut the hole. Uh, we dictate where in the sidewalk it goes. Uh, so by dictating that, we offer the, the cutting of the, the, uh, concrete, break it out. They do the rest, dig the hole and install their own mailbox. Uh, and then, uh, again, vehicle maintenance and repairs, which that happens monthly on all of our stuff. So that was it for us for the month of March.
Thank you, Robert. Did you have a report, Colleen?
Oh, Mayor, may I ask a question?
Sorry, I didn't see your real hand there, Counselor Kenyon. Go ahead.
Sorry, I don't know how to do that on my phone.
That's okay.
Um, Robert, I know a few months back, we approved some of the ARPA grant fund money from this year to be spent on an I N I project up somewhere in the neighborhood up by where Chris and I live. Um, what is the status of that project? Have you guys started or, or when will you, if you haven't yet?
Uh, we have not started that project. Uh, I will have to, uh, get in touch with Ed. I do know we have made contact with one contractor who specializes uh, in that type of work. Um, I know that he's extremely busy. With that said, I know we're gonna need to go out and get a couple more bids due to the, the, uh, cost involved. So I will have to get back with you on that, Counselor Kenyon, to give you a, a more accurate answer.
Okay. Thank you.
I, I will add with that, um, I N I is, is a task that you don't want to handle or, uh, try to tackle when you have heavy rains because the heavy rains increases the I N I. It's harder to eliminate it while it's coming in at full force. So might be one of those things that, that we have to at least get two, three weeks of nothing but dry weather to start an actual job.
Okay.
And you know Oregon, when it's nice, wait ten minutes, it'll change.
Yeah.
So Mayor, you're muted and while you're muted, one add-on to the Blood Force Report. Robert and I met with the caretakers for, uh, Greenworth Park, had the pleasure of meeting them and doing a check-in, uh, before we renew their leases. Uh, so, uh, that'll be done here in the next month or so, and I'll turn it back to you.
Go ahead, Chief Martin.
Oh, I just wanted to clarify something Robert, Robert said, because I was freaking out because pool water was dumping into our office from upstairs. So just, just, just to clarify that, that fact. They, they told Sergeant McPherson that, oh, the water was fine. And then the plumber said, no, the water was not fine. So Sergeant McPherson, they can have a conversation with her about that. And then, uh, not to prolong anything, but Officer Miller, it looks like she did sneak in back here behind me. So, uh, if there's any specific questions for her, I believe she was in the back.
Go ahead, Counselor Spleeloff.
Well, then it is true. The stuff runs downhill.
Uh, all right. Colleen, did you have anything on finance?
All my finance stuff I will be talking about on Monday. So that's all I've had my head in and, you know, so.
I did have one question about finances. Um, I know we discussed that the twenty thousand dollars for ARPA funds would be in this year's um, budget. I just wanted to make sure that both you and Kevin were aware that we also council allocated a hundred thousand dollars for emergency services in this year's budget and I believe a hundred thousand for the I N I.
Okay, I know about the emergency services, the I N I. I didn't know that we actually had that set up yet, but, um,
Does any other counselors have anything to say on that?
So Mayor, in the my budget message, in the proposed budget, it, there's a table of the ARPA funds, uh, to, um, get everyone on the same page in terms of where council provide direction passed on that.
Okay, cause I'm not talking right now about next year's budget. I'm talking about this current budget we're in right now.
Yeah, it, it carries over from your, your current direction to the proposed budget.
Okay, so is that a yes if yours a hundred thousand dollars?
I'm, I'm confirming what you just said, yes.
Perfect. Thank you.
Okay, we're all on the same page.
Good. Did you have anything, uh, our Counselor Whitney, go ahead.
Um, can you guys hear me a little better this time?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, I just wanted, because it seems like you heard me, uh, the last time. And I just wanted to thank the police department for changing their practice and how they're handling the La Rappa violations for wood smoke mitigation. I think it was a smart idea to spread that out to more officers because it allows them to respond more fairly and evenly where it was just Val that meant that she would only be looking at that during the time working. So with it being spread out to other officers, I think that just allows better coverage and better enforcement of the wood smoking really in the long run should help us better meet those goals. So I just wanted to give the police department kudos for that change.
Yes, thank you. Go ahead, Counselor Spleeloff.
I'm gonna have to leave the meeting. I'm starting to hurt really bad.
Okay, understand.
I'll let you know.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Good night, Audi.
Night.
All right, um, going down to, um, ordinances, resolutions. Do we have anything there, Kevin? Is the rest of it blank?
Yeah, the rest of the agenda, there are no items from staff.
Okay, thank you guys for all your thorough reports and coming and answering so many questions. It's really helpful for us to understand the daily jobs you guys all do. Much appreciated.
Mayor?
Yeah.
I apologize for the interruption, but I wasn't able to log on at the beginning of the meeting, so I missed, um, council comments and additions or corrections to the agenda. There was something I wanted to talk about. It was, it was brought up today and I don't know if you guys already have yet or not, but talking about potentially closing city hall during the council meetings until we're open all the way to the public. Can we discuss that?
Sure. Um, Kevin, do you want to explain that a little bit?
Sure. So, um, earlier today, we had to make a choice, a tough choice, to close the backside of city hall where the conference room is, where we've been inviting the public to attend, um, for those folks that don't have access to, say, Zoom, uh, to close that, uh, because we only have typically one staff person back there. And the reason we did that is because we've been getting some, um, unfortunate threats from the public, um, at, uh, front office staff. So we felt until we can get the full council chambers, which you've obviously already discussed earlier tonight, to get that fully renovated, I think it's smart and safe for us to close that back conference room until we can get the council chambers up and running.
So, um, I would like to, one, I'd like to find out if, um, instead of doing that, if we would be able to consider just having our police chief, who's normally in attendance at our meetings, available in city hall with the staff so that we can still leave, um, our op, our, um, space open for the public to attend if they, if they choose to.
Well, I would also like to say that in addition to that, also even with just one or two of us women sitting down there, you know, there's other council people that if you guys want to open to the public could also come down and sit and and be in there as well, that it's just not on us who are already going through a lot of stuff during the day with, with people. So having more people there with us would be helpful. So if you want to open, then maybe we should have some more council people come in to that as well.
So yes, Counselor Kenyon, I can have, uh, Chief or he can assign an officer to attend if that's, if that is the direction of the council. But I will say, we, uh, since I've been on board, we've had no requests to, uh, attend. Uh, so it's, it's been, um, empty. Uh, the back room's been empty for the, well, now for meetings since I've been involved with, uh, the city of Oak Ridge. So certainly if we get a request, um, I can work with Chief Martin on trying to provide a security detail for that.
Yeah, I don't think it's so much about a request. I, I don't think citizens have to, uh, let us know that they're planning on coming.
Then, do they actually do? That's, that's the policy that was set up prior to my arrival.
Could you show me that policy?
It's, it's written on the, um, it's written on the agendas and it's written on the, uh, some of the forums, not, not actually forums, but letters or other communications that were, uh, provided to me when I arrived. letters or other communications that were uh, provided to me when I arrived.
Okay, um, I still like to see it, but uh, do, do you think that that is just because of a COVID restriction? Or a COVID um?
I can only assume it was done for, to, to manage the amount of folks that were gonna be uh, coming into City Hall, but again, uh, no one's been beating down our door, uh, at least over the last two months.
Right, I realize that, and, and just for clarification, all I'm thinking of is, you know, that city council meetings are required to be available to the public to attend, so um, I'd just like to see, see that and see what the rest of the council feels about either attending themselves, um, or, but I think definitely with the word of potential, um, you know, it being unsafe, I think that our chief should definitely be in the presence with staff at City Hall.
Um, Kevin, would you happen to know if it's legal to have our city council meetings closed, my understanding has always been that they must be open to the public.
So, right now, uh, since COVID, open has been defined as um, providing opportunities through Zoom, now with the new hybrid laws that we need to look at, what the effective date of that is, so that's why we've been trying to work towards redoing the council chambers, so we can have the public attend in the new council chamber, so I don't know if we're sort of in a gray area right now in terms of what we considered closed. So I'd have to get back to council on that.
Yeah, my concern is that it's a little bit gray and a citizen could make a substantial complaint, that worries me. But, but I'm also worried about the um, staff members' safety and I um, fully can empathize um, their feelings on the potential of what happened a few days ago, so I see both sides of it.
Definitely, me too.
Is there any more discussion on that? All right, um, hearing nothing else, I'm gonna take public comment. So if there is any public comment on the Zoom, please raise your hand, and if you don't have the option to raise your hand, you can just take yourself off of mute and start speaking. Mr. Barclay, go ahead.
Yeah, couple concerns, uh, and just to follow up on what Counselor Kenyon was saying, I believe uh, public meetings law requires this public be allowed the opportunity to attend public meetings, not necessarily participate, although we always have, but they're required to be able to attend, so we need to take uh, measure to ensure the safety of staff, obviously. My first motion passed tonight was, and the motion was that the city administrator pro temp execute a contract. You know, looking at the audience, you know, most people probably don't care, maybe they don't know. I know and I do care, read the charter that staff and council is subject to and swore an oath to uphold, because despite a flawed legal opinion six years ago, the city administrator's function is to supervise and oversee and provide liaison on contracts on behalf of the city, but all contracts are signed with Mayor Mayor's signature upon council consent, there is nothing unclear about that, the, the city administrator pro temp should not be executing a contract, supervising, overseeing, certainly, not executing, so that motion was failed. The second motion was corrected based on the charter, but the first one still stands, so, you know, it concerns me, and maybe it doesn't matter to anybody else, it matters to me. The charter exists for a reason, and so, past city administrators executing documents and, and putting the city in a in a uh, situation where they were legally bound without the authority to do so, has been a problem. That's, that's a, that's a really easy fix. My, and my last question, concerning the WAC, I, as I understand it, the uh, the former occupants were all essentially evicted because would, would, the building was uninsured and it was, it was, it would have uh, potentially created some liability issues. Now that we've got this one point five million grant to uh, and put some money into rehabbing a fairly dilapidated building, and I agree that we need to do a structural assessment from the go, so that we're not dumping a bunch of money in a derelict building. But during the course of this construction, what is the status of the insurance, because during the course of that work, say, example, and I don't know the scope of the work, but say somebody's doing some welding and they haven't posted a fire watch and you have a fire hazard or whatever, and the building burns to the ground accidentally, because somebody left a torch on or, or the surface got too hot or whatever, what's the status of the insurance on that building that has a value during the construction phase, because at this point, we, we don't have an insured building that, that does have value, and I'm just concerned that uh, you know, during construction, that, that either through the contractor or somebody that, that, you know, that it is insured against loss or damage. And that was all I had.
Thank you, Mr. Barclay, I would like to respond to that just a little. I'll make sure that myself and Kevin Cronin um, look into those questions about the WAC, um, I'm sure Kevin would be happy to look into that and make sure we get back at the next meeting, um, those are really good questions to protect our liability. And, but there is no um, definitive answer if we are doing construction on the WAC, that's kind of to be determined, but yeah, we'll make sure that um, gets looked into, and the other part of um, following the charter, I absolutely agree that um, we need to make sure that the charter is always the utmost importance, and I will make sure that that has a mayor signature on it. And if there is a counselor that would like to change their motion, I'm happy to entertain that.
I thought we made an amendment to that motion.
That was the second one. The first one, we, um, it didn't say anything about mayor signature or council consent.
Can we have the first motion read back to us?
I believe it was, I move to approve the scope of the work and budget and authorize the city administrator pro temp to execute the contract. That was for the engineers bid. Go ahead, Counselor Whitney.
I feel like that motion does meet the criteria where we have approved the scope of the work as a council and part of our process, there are charges for you to sign off on that. You know, the, the process needed and to, so I don't think there's anything additional to really do. You know, we know we're going to follow our charter and we know that you do your piece on that, and it's been authorized to the council based on just that motion.
Any other comments?
Who, who made the motion?
Dawn made the motion. And she added the change orders to that any change orders have to go through council.
Well, I think in past, we always um, make sure to cover our butts, so I don't see any harm in redoing the motion and just adding that in there, if it's better security, it takes us one minute to do it. And it ensures to our citizens that we're following the charter.
I will um, amend the motion to say that the say what it says in the, in the second motion, I, I can't remember the words right now.
Well, here, I normally don't make motions, I'll make it. I move to approve the scope of the work and budget and authorize the city administrator pro temp Kevin Cronin to execute the contract by mayor signature and council approval to include any change orders.
Do you have to do something with the other motion, because it was already passed?
Yeah, I think we need to set it aside, basically.
That's a good question.
Um, I think it would be resend and resend and, I, I forget the terminology for it. resend the motion and re.
I know you do that before, it's, you can do that before it's passed, but I'm not sure.
I thought there was one you could do in the same meeting and one that you, did you have something, Chief Martin?
Yeah, I just, I just Googled it for Robert's rules of order, it says when the motion, when passed, the motion cannot be re- reduced at that meeting, it may be brought up again at the later date.
At the next meeting?
Yeah, I just, later date.
Okay, well, how about this? I move to add on to the prior motion regarding the engineer's structural analysis to ensure that it has mayor's signature by council approval to follow the city's charter.
I'll second that.
Motion made by Mayor Hollitt seconded by Counselor Kenyon. Any discussion?
Yeah, can Kevin please reread what he just said?
Yeah. I don't.
I'm trying to find out, because I actually clicked on the document, so hold, hold on.
So I didn't change the prior motion, I made an additional motion.
And I'm just giving it fast, but it, it looks like that could be appropriate, it's, it's can't get rid of that, you can't bring up the same motion again if you get rid of the motion that you voted on first.
Yeah, I'm not getting rid of the first motion, I'm just making an additional motion to simplify things.
I'm not a per- humanitarian, but I, I believe what the mayor did is correct.
Counselor Whitney?
Yeah, I just didn't know if we could reintroduce something after we've already moved on from that part of our agenda.
Yeah.
Around that, so that was kind of what I was looking for.
I think you're correct, so I think my second motion is probably better well-suited. Any more discussion on it? All right, let's call for the vote.
Counselor Kenyon?
I.
Counselor Coker?
I.
Counselor Whitney?
I.
Counselor Hooker?
I.
Counselor Bjornson?
I.
Mayor Hollitt?
I. Thank you. And that was one public comment, do we have any more in the audience? All right, seeing no, oh, go ahead, Chief Martin.
I'll put my school board hat on real fast and uh, to answer someone's question earlier, yes, the, the food box is going out to West Ridge. I think they've already started, but don't, don't hold me to that, I, I know they're gonna do it the timeframe that the city requested, and I believe they're gonna they have some different options there for people that can't get out there, that they're gonna try to do a delivery somewhere in town once a week or something like that.
Thank you. All right, if there's not any more discussion, we're gonna go into executive session, we are not coming back out into public, we will not have any decisions made. Um, executive session, O R S one nine two dot six six, print two, print A, the governing body of a public body. We consider the employment of a public official, employee, staff member or individual agent, and we will be adjourning after this.
So Jackie, if you can share, cause we use the mayor, um, and then mayor.
The host, if you want.
That would, that would be great, and Mayor, if you want to do a breakout room, just to be on the safe side for privacy re- business, that would be fantastic. Uh, good night, council, I'll see you on Monday night.
Thank you.
Good night.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kevin, have a good weekend.
Good night, Kevin.
Did you get it, Chrissy?
Um, it has not come over yet.
My screen said that Mayor Hollitt or Chrissy has been made the host.
Usually it gives me a notification, but yep, I got it, there it is. Thank you, Jackie.